Ready? There you go. Uh, we have Celeste?
She's on.
She's on.
She's on.
She's on. All right. Very good. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Thursday, February 6th, to order. Please rise and join me for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Erica, would you let the record show that all commissioners are in attendance? Any changes to the agenda?
They're thinking about it.
Don't miss a chair. Thank you. Commissioners, you have one set of minutes before you.
Gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you so much.
Make a motion if we approve the minutes of the January 2nd, 2025, meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Excuse me. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Okay. Well, next is consent agenda, but we have no items for the consent agenda. So we'll move on to public comments. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to the commission about any subject besides the ones that we're dealing with tonight that are on our agenda? This is a great time for you to come forward and let us know your thoughts. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and we get to new business. First up, and only up. Hold a public hearing, consider forwarding a recommendation to City Council for... Three? Yeah. Three different items. DSA 24, including DSA 24-00167, 168. And what's the other one? DSA 25-00, hope it went to zeros, three. Jaclyn, yes?
Good, Dean Commission. Tonight's site is generally located at the east and west of Thornton, south of Selma, and north of I-8. It is part of an annexation request that will be heard by council in conjunction with these three requests before you tonight. The majority of these parcels are owned by Penal County and is part of a purchase agreement with Lucid for their Phase 3 development. So the three requests before the commission tonight, the first one is the Minor General Plan Amendment to change Phase 2 growth area to Phase 1 for approximately 1,300 acres. And the two zone changes are from Urban Ranch to I-2 for approximately 1,200 acres and a zone change from Urban Ranch to B-4 for 110 acres. Here are the review criteria for the Minor General Plan Growth Area. It's covered in the staff report, and staff finds that this criteria has been met. I do want to note that while this is adjacent to existing city limits, the general plan classifies any land that's not within the city's jurisdiction or that cannot be easily served by the city's infrastructure or services in Phase 2. However, with an annexation, an infrastructure and service plan is reviewed and considered by council, and that shows how services and infrastructure can serve these sites within 10 years. So it's appropriate to be within Phase 1 with annexation. Regarding the zone change, here are the three zone change criteria covered in the staff report. I'll be going over each of these on the next slides. For the I-2 zone change, again, the proposed I-2 zone change is approximately 1,198 acres. And the first review criteria is that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and other applicable elements. And some of the goals and actions of manufacturing industry is to provide and expand the manufacturing industry land use areas to accommodate a variety of industries. And that action step is to identify locations where it can be beneficial to increase the manufacturing industry area within the city. Another goal is to encourage appropriate responsible industrial development in appropriate locations. An applicable element associated with this is land use element guiding principle number two, and that community growth should be driven by industrial, corporate office, professional services, financial services, research and development, and other similar developments which offer opportunity for high-paying quality jobs. Review criteria number two is that a zoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. The requested zoning of I-2 is an appropriate zoning district in the manufacturing industry land use category per the 2030 general plan. While there's not specific densities nor intensities for properties within the manufacturing industry land use category that pertains to general industrial developments, it does include site design standards that call for new development to minimize adverse impacts on surrounding and existing land uses through its site design. So the requested zoning for general industrial I-2 is appropriate in the manufacturing and industry land use category and compatibility can be achieved through the design of the major site plan stage. And finally, the third is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. The city's current demand for general industrial land is significant, and this rezone would expand that area. The area to the north does abut existing I-2. However, there is still rural residential development to the east and west, shown in the yellow circles. So we have included some conditions of record associated with aesthetics and architectural standards. As you know, Thornton and Chuchu Road are gateway entrances to the city, so we want to make sure that these points of access to the city have architectural standards. And to be more compatible with the rural residential areas, we've included that some buffering for no conditional uses for uses involving the storage utilization or manufacturing of vaults or explosive materials or products shall be allowed within 600 feet of existing or future uses, residential uses, or within 600 feet of Thornton, Selma, or Chuchu. And we've worked through these with the applicant, and they are okay with those. And again, at the time of major site plan, additional analysis will be considered based on use. Moving on to the B-4 zone change request, again, this is for approximately 110 acres and that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including goals, policies, and other applicable elements. This is within the Commerce and Business General Plan Land Use category, and one of the goals of Commerce and Business is to develop economically competitive regional centers of commercial activity and to promote a wider range of uses than traditional commercial areas, including blended commercial and industrial sites to prepare for changes in demand for retail and other commercial uses. An applicable element associated with Commerce and Business is economic development, and one of those goals is to focus on attracting employers who create higher-paying jobs aligned with key industries. And one of the action steps is to identify businesses that fit into the city's key industries and suppliers, and then develop and employ customized recruitment efforts to attract them. Review criteria number two is that a zoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities within a range of identified uses of the general plan. Within the Commerce and Business Land Use Destination, it does have a maximum floor area of .35, and that retail, commercial, office development should provide spaces that encourage an urban sense of place, including plazas, and at least 10% open space is to be provided. And review criteria number three is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. The requested zoning of Community Services B-4 is an appropriate and necessary zone district to serve this area of the city with the nearby interchange access being a key gateway to the city. And B-4 is appropriate in the Commerce and Business Land Use category. And again, we have also included some proposed conditions of record, again, with it being an entry point to the city. We want to have some aesthetics elevations and architectural standards, and these are also laid out in the general plan as well. Regarding notification efforts, staff and applicant met all the requirements. Notices of applications were sent by staff in December, and notifications of tonight's meeting were sent out to property owners within 1,000 feet. The applicant posted the sites, and this was published in the dispatch on January 21st. I did receive two inquiries. One email from an adjacent property owner wanting to know more about the project. I sent them information and also forwarded to the applicant, and I did not hear back from him. And I did receive another phone call from a property owner who thought her area was within the proposed zone change area, and I let her know that she's adjacent to the site. So with that, first recommendation is to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for a Minor General Plan Amendment to change the growth area from Phase 2 to Phase 1. And the recommendation on I-2, zone change, is to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the zone change requests from Urban Ranch to General Industrial with the following conditions of approval and conditions of record. Do you want to note the highlighted items are changes from the staff report that we've discussed with the applicant this week? And the parcel that's not going to be exempt from condition number two is the parcel just north of... It's already within the city limits, and it's north of an already I-2 zone property. So we were okay with exempting it from there. And then we're just adding language to clarify if a development agreement is made between the developer and city for our right-of-way standard. And then for the B-4 zone change, forward a recommendation of approval to City Council for the zone change requests from Urban Ranch to Community Services B-4 with the following conditions of approval and conditions of record. Happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
All right. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Just to be clear, the one that you exempted from those, can you show that on the map?
So it is...
Got a player?
You seen that? It's this parcel right here.
Gotcha. All right. Very good. Great. Thank you. Staff, anything else? Staff? Very good. Would the applicant or their representative please come forward? Give us your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Nick Wood, Snell and Wilmer, One Arizona Center, actually, it's One East Washington we moved, and I represent Lucid. Seth King, who was in-house counsel for Lucid, is here as well, in case you have any questions for him. He's sitting close behind me, in case I say something stupid, he can kick me. I was here before this body back in 2018, very excited about, you know, the Lucid project, and now here we are with a potential next iteration. The idea behind this next iteration is to create development opportunity. They don't have a plan in place right now, but the idea is to make it ready. What I love about this plan is the fact that it really incorporates the mayor and the council's vision, and that vision is more employment, more business, which of course is essential for the long-term health and viability of the city and the community. I think I have a presentation. I'm sure it's there somewhere. There we go. First slide, please. Next one. This, of course, is the area. Now, we were just here in front of the City Council with the first hearing regarding the annexation, and we're talking about 1,300 additional acres through the entire application process. You know, tonight you're looking at a general plan amendment, a minor general plan amendment, and also with respect to the zoning of the property. The areas that you see there in yellow, highlighted areas, those are the areas that are part of the annexation, with the exception of that one, you know, piece that Jaclyn pointed out, the long, you know, rectangle. And then, of course, the rezoning itself, and you can see, you know, Lucid's manufacturing facility right there. You know, the first general plan request that we're asking for is here. We're going to move from what is Phase 2 into Phase 1. Now, the distinction in the general plan between 1 and 2 is a simple one, and that is, if you're in Phase 1, that means that the city has the ability to provide all of the infrastructure needs of development, whether it's sewer, water, streets, you name it. So we are now going to transition, right? We're asking you to recommend approval of both the general plan as well as the zoning into that, you know, Zone 1. We've worked very closely, and by the way, you've got one of the best staffs in the state. We work in cities all over the state, particularly in the valley, and it's always been a pleasure for us to work with them. And working with them, we've made all these determinations that, in fact, all these services can be provided. So again, what we'll be doing is transitioning it from 2 to 1. Next slide, please. And here, of course, is the general plan use map. We're going to change it really to the manufacturing and then, you know, part of the business. One of the other great parts about this application, especially even with the annexation, is we're now extending the corporate limits all the way down to Interstate 8, right? We already have a connection to 10, especially along Selma Highway. But now we're going to transition and again, expand the corporate limits down to the south. And this is all part of that process. Next slide, please. Here's another shot of the current zoning, and as you can see, the corporate limits now end outside of the, where you see what the site is. And, you know, we are now going to be changing that zoning, as you heard, to L-2 as well as B-4. Next slide. And here's the transition from both of us. So now we have the ability to do all of the additional industrial and over, you know, 1,100 acres essentially, and then the business part of it. Obviously, having commercial, especially along I-8, generates many things for the city, and it also generates things like sales tax, transaction privilege tax, but allows for the expansion and development of that area. That area is actually owned by Mr. Lawrence. We are not part of that development itself, but because we have decided to go forward with our project and speaking with him, he said, "Would you guys mind if I kind of tag along?" So Spike Lawrence owns the property that is the B-4, and so we're just including that. And again, it gets the extension down to I-8. Next slide, please. Here's another shot with respect to the zoning and its relationship to the rest of the zoning in the area. Next slide, please. And that's it. With respect to the stipulations, we've worked very closely with Jaclyn and staff on the stipulations, so the ones that she placed up on the screen are acceptable to us. And respectfully request a recommendation for approval to pass on to City Council, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions? Nope. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. So now I'll open the public portion of the meeting. Anybody from the public like to address this issue, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners? Thoughts? Action?
I'll just piggyback off of what Mr. Wood was saying regarding the benefits of bringing all of this land into the city of Casa Grande, and especially that connection to I-8. Just when you look at the city limits currently, now you'll see a big donut almost that is a bunch of land that's still in Penal County, but I think this will push more of those landowners and those people coming in to develop more industrial in this area to maybe look at annexing into the city of Casa Grande. And that, to me, means that we can provide more attentive service, I think, to those landowners and get through processes without having to go all the way over to Florence and meet with that staff and go through the Board of Supervisors, all of that, which, you know, if you want to, you definitely can, but I think we can provide a much better service here in the city of Casa Grande. And that's where I think this is a good way for us to kind of entice those other landowners in the area to maybe look at annexing into the city. That's, and to me, I think that's a good thing for our city to get that land. So just following off of what Mr. Wood said.
Great. Nope. Anything else? Okay. You know what's next? Somebody?
I would like to make a motion for a recommendation of approval to City Council for a Minor General Plan Amendment to change the growth area from Phase 2 to Phase 1, DSA 25-00003.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, Erica, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
Aye.
Member Aldrette?
Aye.
Member Vanderheiden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes, and next, the zone change.
Mr. Chair, I'll make some...
Thank you very much.
For a zone change from Urban Ranch to General Industry I-2 for DSA 24-00167.
Second? Okay. With the conditions and...
Yeah, but the conditions.
Yep. Conditions of record. All right. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Aldrette?
Aye.
Member Vanderheiden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes.
And one more.
And I'll go ahead and, Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much.
A zone change from... Am I on the right one?
Yep.
Yep. DSA 24-00168 for a zone change from Urban Ranch to Community Service with the except conditions of approval.
A second?
Got a motion and a second?
Just for the record, making sure that's a motion to forward a favorable recommendation.
Yes. Favorable recommendation, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Real good. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Member Smith?
Yes.
Member Aldrette?
Aye.
Member Vanderheiden?
Yes.
Member Hubbard?
Yes.
Member Peters?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garza?
Aye.
Chairman Benedict?
Yes.
All right. Motion's passed. And... Thank you, guys. Appreciate you. Certainly didn't take the... Well, this isn't the whole firm, never mind. Appreciate your interest. Okay. Where we at? Next? Paul has reports for us.
I do, Mr. Chair. Let's see. First off, on the minor site plans administratively approved, we have one that many people are excited about, which is the approval of the Target Site Plan. So they now have the green light to go get their building permit, to do those facade improvements that they're proposing to do. The Board of Adjustment did deny a variance on a manufactured home park that was asking for an eight-foot front yard setback where an eight-foot rear where 10-foot is required. So that was denied. City Council has made decisions on a number of your recommendations. They've, let's see, they approved the zone change on Potabom, going from multifamily to B-2. Then they changed the zoning from I-1 to I-2 in the Rockwell Avenue that's in the industrial park, airport industrial park. They approved the zone change from CO to B-2 on Cottonwood Lane. They approved the zone change from R-3 to PAD on Trickle Road. They approved a minor amendment to the general plan for, well, that's probably the mine, right? 3,300 acres, right? And they also did an amendment to the, to the general plan for the mine also to remove some of the roads that were passing through the mine. They approved the Legends PAD to approve the mine. And then they approved the zone change on the corner of Eighth and Olive from B-1 to B-3, but in doing so, they did reimpose the 28-foot height limit on that property. If you recall, that was originally recommended, and then we talked about it and was removed, and now it's back on there. So those were the council decisions. I do have the monthly reports for you, and I just want to point out a couple of things about those. First, the building permit report. You could see that, I just wanted to point out, a multifamily, for the first time this year, we did permit some additional multifamily. This is the first time, well, actually, in the first, in the last seven months that we've done that, I believe. What, 392 last month? And I'm going to tell you where they were, is those were the apartments, the Roars Apartments on O'Neil and Peert. It was the 55-plus project, and then also another family-type project, both off O'Neil and Peert area, if you recall those. The other thing that I, piece of data that I prepared recently for City Council that I thought commission might be interested in, it's a summary of the new apartment developments and the build-to-ret developments that are kind of just, either just now finishing up and getting ready for occupancy, or they're still in the construction, they're in the construction stage. or their permits issued or about to be issued, and they're about to start construction. So you can see there under the apartments, you can see the different kind of categories, ready for occupancy. We have three of them ready for occupancy. We have four of them that are under some level of construction, and we have two of them that are, building permits either issued or under review. Same thing with the build-to-rent, you can see those numbers of units. So just thought I'd share that with commission, you might be interested in, also an indication of which ones might be the low-income housing tax credit units and which units might be market rate. So I wanted to share that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. And then some land use summary. Things are a little slower in January. We'll see how the rest of the year goes, but January was fairly slow for us. So that's all I have to report, Mr. Chair.
So, besides, on the City Council's actions, besides the twenty-eight, thirty to twenty-eight, did we agree, did they agree with us on all of these? There are several of them, and I'm trying to remember how we acted on all of them, and I can't.
So on the, on the B-1 to B-3, you did recommend the zone change, but you recommended that we not impose the height limit at the zoning stage?
Right.
And just really evaluate it at the major site plan stage? Council wanted to impose that condition, so they imposed that.
Pardon?
Yep.
It's not on there, is it? Is it? Was it on there?
The other thing, they did, they did hear a request for basically a review of your decision on the courtyard apartments to rezone them from B, from R-3 to PAD to add those two additional buildings. And you recommended, I believe you denied that, and the recommended denial. And then the council approved it on, I think, a six to one vote. So council did end up kind of reversing your decision, if you will.
They didn't take, didn't take our recommendation. That's okay. Once in a while, that's okay.
They were going to be doing, like, they're going to be renovating all the apartments and...
Yeah, these.
Like, because when we were talking to them, they said they weren't.
Right.
And they are, and they're going to be painting, and they're going to be giving first bids to people living there to move into the new apartments. So I can see why they said yes, and I think they basically... I think they geared up because we said no before, and kind of gave more benefits of what they were doing, and there is going to be room for a playground and stuff that they didn't really explain before.
Yep, wasn't explained at all.
So I can see why they said yes.
Very good. That was the one.
Yeah, I spoke about...
That's the one you wanted, yeah.
Well, I spoke about where the playground was going to be moved, that they're keeping the same amount of rec space, that it made sense because it would give them money to renovate the rest of them.
Garrett and I were proven right again.
You what?
Garrett and I were proven right again. Well, for you, I believe it. Okay.
Paul, can I ask you one thing on that twenty-eight-foot imposition that the council decided on? Is there a feeling that the property owner is going to pull that project now?
You know, it had got second reading of the ordinance on Monday night, so the zoning is done. The property owner, I believe, is going to be meeting with staff in the near future to talk about what his next steps are and his future plans, so we're not really sure what the status is going to be at this point.
Gotcha. Okay, commissioners, anything else for the good of the order?
I have one other question for Director Tice.
Absolutely, please.
In regards to the rental properties, you mentioned, I see here, the apartment and also the rent developments, and you have total units, that's roughly about thirty-two hundred units. Where do we stand as far as percentage-wise of hitting a target, per se, of rental units within the area? Are we within twenty percent, thirty, sixty?
Well, first off, I have to ask my city attorney if I can answer the question because it's not on the agenda. So how much can I talk about that point, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, I think the small discussion on the data is okay, but if we, you know, we might be getting into territory where we might have future decisions to come up on those things, so, you know, it's probably safer to agendize something for maybe next month, and we can provide a report and discussion on that if you would like.
Commissioner Smith, here's what I can do. A few months ago, maybe a little bit longer than that, staff prepared what we call a housing supply and need analysis in the community that looked at that very question. How much zone, how much of the land have we, have we zoned enough land for a single family and multifamily and build-to-rent and manufactured homes to meet the community demand? And if so, for how long, right? What's our supply versus our need? And so I can email you that study, that PowerPoint.
Okay, great.
And that will probably, and then just feel free to follow up with me on that, and if you have any questions once you review it, okay?
Excellent.
And that'll probably answer most of your questions. If not, we can talk about them in more detail.
Great. Thank you.
Good, good question. Thank you. All right, anything else? Okay, we will be adjourned for five minutes.
Deal.
And then we will come back to order in our next meeting.
Very good.
All right? Very good.